I thought Wes was behind me. Okay, he forgave us to me.
Ah, what a good day. This is true.
Yeah, in the state.
That's like the Big Brother thing.
No, not at all. No, 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 no. Not at all.
Are you? You're gonna get it with mom.
It's really cool. It might be this.
Here's some good tips.
Okay, we'll now move on to tree designations for historic trees, which will also include a public hearing. We've allocated 15 minutes for this item. I invite Mr. Mike Ronain, urban forester of Parks and Recreation, to present.
Ronain.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Hello.
On November 4th, 2013, the city council passed a tree conservation ordinance that permitted the designation of public or private trees as protected under one of four categories. Heritage tree means any tree that has been individually designated by city council to have notable historic cultural interests. Memorial tree means any tree that has been individually designated by city council to have a special commemorating memorial. Specimen tree means any tree that has been individually designated by city council to have notable by virtue of its outstanding size and quality for its particular species. Street tree means any tree that has been individually designated by city council and which grows in a street right of way or on private property as authorized by the owner and placed or planted there by local government. Attached are three trees forwarded for designation under this program. The first tree is a large southern red oak at the front right of the main entrance of Venable Elementary School. This tree is proposed for designation as a specimen tree. This large spreading oak at Venable was the subject of Charlottesville's Arbor Day celebration in 2018. Another proposed tree is a large Schumard oak in front of the Jefferson Madison Regional Library, proposed for designation as a specimen tree. This large tree resides in the front right of the historical library downtown and was celebrated for Charlottesville's Arbor Day in 2017. The last tree is a large basswood in Emancipation Park, proposed for designation as a heritage tree. This tree's sister tree was removed two years ago in Emancipation Park and is now the largest diameter tree in the park, residing in near the corner of East Market Street and First Street North in the southwest corner of the park. Pursuant to Section 18-9b2, council is required to conduct a public hearing on these requests and pass an ordinance if the designation is to be given. The Tree Commission's City Arborist findings along with the original applications are included as attachments.
Any questions? So, as you may have heard, I called Mr. Daley today to ask you, it looks like in your report for the third tree that you didn't feel like you would have recommended that to be protected under the ordinance for the reasons stated.
That's true.
Could you just kind of step through where we landed at here?
My report as an arborist looked at it very methodically as far as structure, structural integrity of the tree and things like that, just sort of location. It's a very prominent tree in the park and I understand why a tree commission would like to have it designated, but as an arborist, there's, the more you look at it, the more defects you can find, so that I had a problem with that professionally.
But then the Tree Commission, they went forward and all three of these are recommended.
Yeah, they decided to go forward.
All right, thank you, that helps. Clarifying questions?
Did you discuss your reservations with the Tree Commission?
Yes, and they chose to move forward.
Okay.
All right, if there are other questions, then we'll open it up to the public hearing. Rebecca Quinn.
Rebecca Quinn, 104 Fourth Street, here in the city. As you just heard, one of the trees on the list is the Schumard oak in front of the library. It's described as in excellent health despite the aggressive erosion, exposed roots, steep slope, and compacted soil, and stone chip walkway at the top of the slope. I want to thank council and Councilor Galvin in particular for including the front of the library in the park planning initiative. Such a fine tree specimen deserves to have a more pleasing environment rather than a stressful-looking conditions that you see every day when you walk by. I'm sure I'm not the only one who is looking forward to that planning process, and I'm sure the planning team already knows the value of that tree, but this designation, which I support, will reinforce that value. I do also, though, have a question about the tree in Emancipation Park. If it doesn't rise to that level of a specimen tree or whichever designation it's called for, you know, would Mike designating it now somehow interfere, especially if it's not in great health? I mean, I think as it said, his sister tree was taken down. It was in fairly poor condition, if you recall that tree. So I wouldn't want to constrain a, not that I want trees to come down, but in the grander scheme of planning for that park, we don't want a moderate-quality tree to interfere with our possible thinking. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, close the public hearing. I guess we'll have a discussion, is there a motion?
I just need to ask you all, I'm gonna pass down a copy of a proposed ordinance. The staff was a little confused in preparing the agenda materials as to whether a resolution or an ordinance is required. And to designate the trees, you're required to use an ordinance, but there's no procedural problems in the text of the ordinance, follows the outline of the resolution that you received in your packets, involves the same trees, but just the requirement of the state law that our local ordinance is based on and the requirements of the wording of our local ordinance require you to make the designation by adopting an ordinance. So, that's what's in front of you.
And Ms. Robertson, if I may ask, so the distinction again between an ordinance and a resolution is, a resolution is a statement of intent and ordinance is something that can be enforced?
Well, a resolution is more like sort of a written motion, it has a lot of details in it, and ordinance is an act that has the force and effect of a law. It's more official, it's, it's more formal, and that's just the wording of our local ordinance says council will designate these trees by ordinance.
What's the punishment for violating?
I'm not sure, but we want to make sure that the trees are protected as per your intentions, so we want to, if you decide to do it, you should do it correctly.
Do you want to make a motion in a second, then we can discuss anything?
I will move that we adopt the ordinance that Ms. Robertson has given us, designating certain trees as protected trees under the city's tree conservation ordinance.
A second then.
Second. Is there, I do not have a statement about it other than?
I do want a little discussion though, because if I may, Vice Mayor.
Sure.
And it's the point that Ms. Quinn makes about the, I guess, the tree in the, what is now called Emancipation Park, and our arborist has said that that is not worthy of this classification, is my understanding, and that, Ms. Quinn made a very interesting point, is this, is this something that will hamstring us later on as we redesign the park?
I brought that up with Mr. Daley when I spoke to him, but I certainly let you respond to that question.
Per the conservation ordinance, city council may authorize the removal or other action upon making a determination that there's an overriding need for public improvement which necessitate, necessitate removal of the tree, so.
Oh, so that, that can override this ordinance?
It would have to come back to council, but yes, you could remove the tree if, in the redesign. Otherwise.
Oh, yeah, but if something was just wrong with this tree and we determined that it needs to come down, there's nothing, nothing in what we're doing today, that was kind of what I discussed with Mr. Daley, was like, if all of a sudden we see this as being a public safety issue, that this tree is just, does not have a future, that we could take it down, there's nothing that we're doing today, we're protecting it, but then once it no longer deems protection, it doesn't have anything in the way of taking it down?
That's correct.
By us approving this?
Right.
And we can decide in the wake of the, of the design process of the, of the park, that if this needs to go and it is a marginal tree, that would have to be an amendment to this ordinance, and that's what that detail is?
Right.
Okay. I just wish, I mean, there's no one from the Tree Commission here to make, make the case as to why they felt that this was an important tree? I guess not. Okay.
So we have a motion in a second?
Ms. Robertson, do we need, we need two readings on the ordinance, correct?
Oh, I thought, that's what it was. We originally had it as two readings, and then we went back to one.
Those concerns can also.
All right.
Okay, okay.
If there are any, if there aren't any concerns, we'll probably put this on again.
And the consent. Right, okay.
All right, we will now receive the report on the hydraulic small area plan. I invite Mr. Alex Akifanay, Director of Neighborhood Development Services, to present.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Alex Akifanay, NDS Director. First of all, I would like to start by thanking the project team. First, Councilor Galvin for the role she played on the advisory panel. Chip Boils, the executive director of Thomas Jefferson MPO. Har Jones, who's the project engineer from VDOT. We also have Sal Mosharaf, who's the lead project person from Kemble Horn, who was in charge of the small area plan, the land use element. This project essentially started in February 2017. It was driven by advisory panel that is composed of 12 representatives, three from the city, three from the county, representative from Southern Environmental Law Center. I believe Mr. Butler is here. She spoke to council sometime this evening, and she also sent a letter to the city council in support of the project. We also have representatives from major landowners and business owners along the corridor that participated as members of the planning advisory panel. The project is two-phase. One is a land use component, and then the other one is the transportation aspect, which basically informs each other. And there are several recommendations, there are two recommendations in the transportation piece, and then the land use basically set up the framework for the land use. And there were several community engagement process, I'm gonna turn this over to Har Jones in a minute, that will guide the city council through the presentation. And I believe council, you've already seen this presentation as part of the 2-2-1 and then joint work session with the Planning Commission. The citizen engagement was very elaborate, even though it was basically driven by the planning advisory panel. We had a lot of neighborhood inputs, and the planning team comprehensively respected the request by the neighborhood associations in terms of restricting the planning process to the core of the planning area, which is intersection of hydraulic and Route 29. And at the end of the day, we provided, we developed a plan, and that plan went through community meetings and advisory panel vetting, and eventually, from the last survey received in terms of the voting, per se, from the public, I believe more than 75% of the people who responded to the, to the, some kind of voting process, voted for one of the options. There are three options to the project, option one, two, and, two, and three, and the panel recommended option one, and the citizen responded overwhelmingly to option one. And this, tonight, we are asking the city council to approve the recommendation from the planning commission, which is in line with the recommendation from the planning advisory panel. And then with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Har Jones, the VDOT project engineer.
Were you, are you planning to present again? Because I think, okay, because we.
If you're all interested, we have a PowerPoint or some kind of move-up view.
Oh, okay, do we, how do we feel, I mean, I've seen it three times, so.
The only difference was, was Mr. Mazara at the, any of the presentations? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that you've seen the full team.
So.
I'd hate to have them come and not say anything.
You're welcome, just.
I just.
I was just asking about the presentation.
Yeah, I agree.
It's the same presentation.
Right.
So we'd be glad to take your questions.
And do either, anyone on the team have comments to make, reflections, whatever?
I'd just like to say that Chip Boils was instrumental in initiating and working through the first phase of the project with the transportation, the land use plan. The second part of the project was, in my view, a little easier. The land use component with the small area plan was a difficult job, so Chip deserves a lot of credit for that effort, as does the panel, so, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have a motion?
I just, because the land use component was, was very unique for VDOT to be working with, and I think Mr. Mazara has, deserves some credit as well.
Thank you. Sal Mazara with Kemble Horn. All I will say is that I think the process was amazing, and given all of the different perspectives, the city, the county, and the private sector, and I think the fourth site to do land use and evaluate land use prior to transportation, and then to keep land use informing transportation as we went into the second phase, a lot of credit due to everyone involved. We continue to say that pedestrian and bicycle mobility is really important, and connectivity of the legacy neighborhoods to the core area and services is really important, and I think the transportation team has done a good job of keeping that in mind as they look at those solutions, but I had a great conversation with Mr. Chang out in the hallway, and that idea of taking care of the neighborhoods and making sure they're connected, I think is at the forefront of the plan, but really kudos to the panel and to your community for, for the involvement, it was a really good process.
And affordable housing was a very big issue, too.
Very big, yes.
Well, thank you very much, it was really a pleasure working with everybody, and we're not done yet. There is still a lot of devil in the details, as they say, which I want to just make that clear, because there's still questions from the bike, pet advisory committee wanting more details fleshed out, that still is ongoing, but the, the very big, the big issues are resolved, so thank you so much for all your work. And I would like to make a motion, and, and a point of clarification, Ms. Robertson, could I, could I make the motion for the both at the same time? Both for the land use plan as well as the transportation plan?
Sure.
So, Vice Mayor Hill, I'd like to move to amend the city comprehensive plan by incorporating the 2018 hydraulic 29 small area plan and designating the area as an urban development area, and I move to amend the city comprehensive plan by incorporating the 2018 hydraulic 29 transportation improvement plan, which includes scenario one, grade separated interchange at the hydraulic and Route 29 intersection.
Is there a second?
A second.
If I may make a comment, I know you want to get out of here in 10 minutes. It's just that I do think it's really important to acknowledge, and some of the great comments said tonight, that we are only a 10-square-mile city. We have a very crying need for affordable housing, due in large part to our accelerating land values, and it, so, the only place for us to go is in our areas that are already developed, we have to reimagine and repurpose them in order to make acts, make them accessible to the kind of places that we want to live in, work in, and, and learn in. So I think this particular project, the hydraulic project, was an incredibly good example of what we mean by needing to repurpose an obsolete landscape. It's an old shopping center, auto-centric, 100 acres of asphalt, purely commercial use, and next to a, a major intersection that had one of the highest crash rates in the state of Virginia. So this was a combination of a perfect storm, if you will, the, the, the need for a new vision for land use, and as well as a crying need for solutions of a transportation in nature, and it came together in this small area plan. Now, we talk about adding affordable housing, we talk about adding jobs, but there was no way to do that, given that you just had this slate of asphalt parking lot. And so it required a new block network, it required new pathways, so that you could actually create the landscape that buildings could fit on. So it was a two-step process, the net, the transportation network and then the, the land use plan, but then the zoning recommendations are also very important to make that come to fruition. And the planning did move forward with a form-based code approach, and what's also interesting is that this, that we seem to be moving in parallel with what's going on with the small area planning in the Ryo Road area. Taken together, those two transit hubs will be able to give us much more, more, more opportunity for bus rapid transit in the near, in a, in a distant future along the US 29 corridor. But getting back to the, to the affordable housing piece, we also know, and we've gotten emails from the public about this, well, how is that gonna happen? Well, you get the network right, you get the zoning right, you start getting the mixture of land uses, the mixture of housing types that you don't have now, but you still need to make sure that you put a whole suite of strategies in place, and that's something that we're already talking about as a council, that's kind of independent sidebar that we'll be having more, you know, fulsome discussion about that with the Housing Needs Assessment Study. But I would like us to move forward with making a designation of a, of a percentage target of supported affordable housing units in our small area plans, because we have 12 small area plans, that is where, those are the landscapes we need to repurpose, that's where we can get, make the biggest dent in our affordable housing needs, and at the same time create livable communities at the same time that have parks, as demonstrated in this hydraulic plan, that have more jobs for all, for all skill levels, and, and it, it was a really good model of community engagement as well. And that's how you get buy-in, that's why you get people coming, supporting the plan. Instead of residents coming to tell us that it's a crying shame that this development is coming into their backyard. So I just, I think this is a really good, important step in the process. We've got a completed small area plan, but it's one of many steps. We're still trying to implement the SIA, our first plan. We're, we're slow moving on the Cherry Avenue Plan. I think the more we accelerate this process with, with dedicated, mission-driven people commandeering the tools at our disposal, and listening, listening, listening to the public, we'll actually achieve our housing goal, which I think we're about 1,000 units short at the very minimum to meet our goal. So that's all I have to say, and I, I hope you all support this, and again, I think it's, it's great that we got this done within a year.
Thank you for the time and commitment that you've put in as our representative in this project, it has been a process, I know, so.
Well, you're welcome, and it's been, it's been an honor, and it's been hard, but it's been really fruitful.
All right, do we get a second? We did, right? We're voting?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin.
Motion passes forward to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Councilors, do we have any other matters?
We have one.
Other business?
Vice Mayor Hill, I do. I would like to put forth a resolution authorizing the city attorney to retain outside legal counsel on a pro bono basis, and for the sake of the public, I shall read it. Be it resolved by the Charlottesville City Council that the city attorney, including any attorney serving as acting city attorney, is hereby authorized to retain outside legal counsel to assist the city attorney with any pending litigation involving the city of Charlottesville, and with any matter requiring the provision of legal advice of the city government when such outside legal counsel is offering to provide such assistance on a pro bono basis. Reference to pro bono shall mean, for purposes of this resolution, that there will be no charge to the city for the provision of legal services, but if requested by any such outside counsel, the city may pay such reasonable costs, postage, duplication, copying costs, et cetera, if the city attorney approves the request in advance of the costs being incurred, and the finance director determines that funding is available to cover such, such costs. Be it further resolved that the city attorney, including any attorney serving as acting city attorney, is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city of Charlottesville any agreement in the nature of an engagement letter to engage outside legal counsel on a pro bono basis as set forth herein above.
Second.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson.
Motion passes forward to zero.
Great.
Is there any other business?
One question, Mr. Jones. A while ago, I asked to get a notion of a per capita expenditure on housing for Charlottesville.
It's actually in a, in a response that Alex sent.
Okay, I didn't see that yet.
He tried, he tried to send it earlier in the day, he was having issues with this email, it came through about 6:35 this evening.
Do you remember it by any chance?
I can call it up.
I can dig it up. Because at one point, we were second only to Alexandria.
We've, we've surpassed Alexandria.
I just read that email.
Okay, good.
I have it.
According to, according to the response, the city's current per capita spending, that's fiscal year 18, is $120, $124 per person. Alexandria is approximately $61. Oh, I'm sorry, Albemarle is $61, City of Alexandria is $56 per person, $33 per person in Roanoke, $23 per person in City Winchester, so that was the list.
That's really important information. And the other thing, I, when I was reviewing the housing report, did we ever really talk about that? The housing report that we got last month? Because I did notice a discrepancy, discrepancy between the table embedded, and I asked about it, but, and, and then the table in the appendix about our total expenditures and the total number of units that we are building, and it was a sizable discrepancy, but one thing I did notice, that in 2017, 18, that year was three times more units built with the C, the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund than on average the last 11 the last eleven years, three times more. And I don't think that's been a, because it was, it was stunning to me to see that there was so much more being built that last year.
We can follow up on that.
Yeah. And whatever we're doing, that's the pace we're going to keep, but it was clearly distinctively high-yield last year.
Alright, we will finish by opening the floor to matters by the public. Again, each person will have three minutes to speak, and we ask that you begin by sharing your name and address. Going once? Going twice?
I have one thing.
Good night!
Just kidding.
Thank you, everyone. This concludes the meeting of the Charlottesville City Council. We are adjourned.